America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
In accordance with the requirements of the Open Public Meetings Act, I wish to announce that the New Jersey Open Public Meetings Law was enacted to ensure the right of the people and public to have advance notice of and to attend the meeting of bodies at which any business affecting their interests is discussed or acted upon. Notices announcing the date, time, and place for this meeting were sent to all concerned individuals, associations, and sent to Union County local source in accordance with Chapter 231 of Public Law in 1975. Calling the roll, Ms. Primack?
Here.
Ms. Miller?
Here.
Ms. Justice?
Here.
Ms. Cohen?
Here.
Mr. Cho?
Here.
Vice President Cologne?
Here.
President Bonner?
Here.
You have a quorum.
Fantastic. We have a couple of presentations tonight, student safety data system, which is always exciting, and harassment, intimidation, and bullying, not as exciting, but still right up there.
Thank you, President Bonner.
Important.
Okay, good evening, everyone. Thank you. So, this is a presentation of the student safety data system. As the board knows, this is a report that is required twice a year. The first reporting period is from September 1st to December 31st, and we are required to report that data during the second reporting period, which we're currently in. And next year, we will report out on the second reporting data that we're currently going through right now. The SSDS actually encompasses all of violence, vandalism, weapons, substance abuse charges, and any incidences of HIB, harassment, intimidation, and bullying. I'm going to present tonight on the violence, vandalism, and weapons and substance abuse data. We have a couple of years of past data here for you to compare to. Keep in mind, last year, as we all know, with the abbreviated schedule and the inability to rack up such higher numbers with our half-day schedules and virtual hybrid. But I want to point out here on the left on the side, you'll see the different categories that we're required to keep data on when we experience any of those incidences. Over the last several years, they've added a couple of types of behaviors or incidents to this list. You can see there, under violence, all of what we may have to report if we experience that. And we do have one assault that we're reporting this report period, as well as one weapons charge. The definitions of them are online. The assault was really some students getting engaged in some behavior that's not favorable, knowing that they would fool around with each other and potentially hurt each other. And the weapons charge was a student bringing a knife into school and just kind of bragged about it to another student, but no threat of violence or anything. But we still have to report that when we experience those types of incidents. When it comes to substance abuse, you can see there, we have to report out the suspected whoever refuses an exam, we treat as a positive. That's as per policy, as well as confirmed use and possession. And keep in mind that this, they can be reported in two different categories. So someone can test positive, and also that same individual is getting reported as possession as well. All in all, our data is very good when it comes to our reporting of the violence, vandalism, weapons information from year to year. So we do provide the board with, you know, reflection back, a couple of different reporting periods to compare. And I open up to any questions from the board if you have any information or questions about the portion of my report. All right, great. I'm going to turn it over to our anti-bullying coordinator, Laura Kaplan.
So, in addition to the data that Superintendent Huff just presented, we also report out information about HIV cases that occurred during reporting period one, which again is from September 1st through December 31st. In the information that I'm going to provide, it will include the number of confirmed cases, number of cases investigated, and those that were founded in each building, a list of who our anti-bullying specialists are by building, the different natures of HIV that took place, remedial measures or discipline, and then different trainings and programs that we do annually to address and be proactive in terms of HIV. Here are the totals, and again, you can see the last three years. We had one, you know, the first number represents the number that were investigated, the second number represents how many of those that were investigated were found to be in violation of our HIV policy, and then all of them are closed, meaning that the investigation has since been closed and reported to the board. The totals are at the bottom, so nine investigated throughout the district in this reporting period, with five of which being founded. In each building, we have an anti-bullying specialist. I'm the coordinator for the district. Typically, they are a counselor in each of the buildings where, except at the middle and high school, there are student assistance coordinators. All of this information and contact information is also on the website. Some that have parentheses were when leave replacements have been in place, or if there's two, it's when there's a current leave replacement in place. In terms of the different nature of HIV, so these are, what we would categorize as kind of the defining characteristics, or what the motivating factor was for an incident that was founded to be in violation of HIV. So these included gender identity and expression, ancestry, mental, physical, or sensory disability, appearance, color, race, or ethnic origin, and sexual orientation. Again, similar to how multiple categories could be met with one case, the same applies for HIV. So there could be more than one motivating characteristic in an incident that was investigated. With regards to the different types of remediation and discipline that occurred with the varying cases, all involve parent contact. It might include a student conference. We provide support services to both sides, both the alleged victim and alleged perpetrator, counseling, some referral for treatment or therapy, denial of privileges. This could be privileges at lunch, privileges at recess, privileges socially outside of, after school as well, lunch detention, and detention. The different programs and trainings that occur, we do a district-wide professional development on anti-bullying. This year, we did an annual one throughout the whole district, and then we also do district policy at each of the buildings. This is done for both staff and students. We did a suicide prevention training across the district for staff this year. School counselors, child study team members, and nurses were trained in crisis intervention by a doctor at Overlook. And we've also, some of our counselors and principals have been trained in restorative practices in the first reporting period. The different programs that we've hosted include, in October, it's a busy month, Red Ribbon Week and the Week of Respect occur, so different events were happening across the district in each of the buildings to celebrate those weeks. There's advisory at the middle and high school. Thrive and SEL Meeting Time are elementary curriculum programs that address social-emotional learning and anti-bullying. We continue to work with four other neighboring districts to offer our consortium programs for parents, tying back into SEL and a focus on these topics. Classroom lessons occur across the building, and then each anti-bullying specialist chairs a school climate team and holds meetings throughout the year to evaluate any cases of HIB, the climate as a whole in the building, and make recommendations for improvements. That is it. Are there any questions about any of the data that I presented on HIB? I'll see you again next reporting period. Thank you.
Thank you, Laura.
Okay, I'm going to take this. Don't get a slap.
Okay. Seems so quiet in here for us until a month ago. I will take it. See if we can be efficient tonight. Thank you for coming, and for those of you at home for listening in and watching. It's not lost to me that approximately two years ago, within about 72, 48 hours of this very moment, many of us sat in the superintendent's office pre-Supervisor Huff and like came to the conclusion that we were going to have to close school. And it's been a long two years. It is good to see that our students are in school without masks, and that we're no longer quarantining students, and our kiddos are able to be back taking advantage of all of the educational opportunities that our district provides. So we're fortunate to be back and learning. Another thing that's been on my mind this week is watching the events unfold in Ukraine. And I think a lot about kids and how, again, fortunate we are that our kids are in school and we can pick them up and drop them off every day without fear of some of the horrible things that are going on in Europe at this time. Speaking of kids doing really smart things, reading is knowledge, and knowledge is power. You've got to read, baby, read, read, baby, read. When I was teaching in Newark at KIPP, every morning, we would sing that song as a school. And looking back on it, I realize now how powerful that statement is, and how specifically the piece about knowledge is power, and what it affords all of us to be knowledgeable about the world and have access to books. During the first week of March, the district celebrated Read Across America Week throughout the primary centers and our elementary schools. This was not only a fun time to put on crazy socks and do crazy hair, but it also was a special time to honor the love and importance of reading. At our primary centers, each classroom decorated their classroom doors, identifying all the special places they could read, emphasizing the benefits of reading. Distinguished VIP guests visited classrooms to read stories such as Superintendent Huff, Director of Human Resources, Rob Gardella. I heard lots of good things about your showing. And Lincoln Hubbard's Principal, Matt Carlin. Additionally, all primary center students participated in a book swap, where they could bring in gently-used books and swap them out for others to add to their home collection. Each school had a very special opportunity to be visited by author Jack Gontos, probably maybe perhaps saw that online and on the Facebook and the Instagram, thanks to the generosity of the Summit Educational Foundation and the elementary PTO groups. In addition to Mr. Gontos's visit, SEF also funded close to $3,000 in book purchases at all five elementary schools. During his time at each school, Mr. Gontos shared his writing process at student assemblies, organized teacher workshops, and made time to sign books for students and staff members. We were very excited to welcome Mr. Gontos to our elementary schools, especially for an in-person visit. Other exciting book-related happenings throughout the week included special guest readers, Mayor Rayan, sorry, Mayor Nora Radist, who is the mayor of Summit, and Summit Police Officer Theo Richards. A school-wide Drop Everything/Read Initiative and Character Potato Contest, where students dressed up potatoes to look like their favorite book characters. What was yours, Rob? Did you do a potato?
No.
No, no potato. Thank you to all our school librarians and teachers who helped organize, create, and run the activities and events throughout the week. It was truly a fun and engaging week, an important week, that all of our students thoroughly enjoyed participating in. And again, that was National Book Week, so it's nice to have books coming into schools as opposed to going out. So excellent work by all of our schools. So those are my comments for the evening. Turn it over to Superintendent Huff.
Thank you, President Bonner. I couldn't agree with you more that it's a bright future. We're all looking very much forward to a very strong and normal end of the school year, and I couldn't be happier to focus my comments tonight on a lot of positive happenings in the various schools and that I'm going to share with you now. Starting with Brayton Elementary School. Brayton is celebrating Brain Awareness Month in March. Each week, students focus on a different topic: brain information, brain health, exercise for your brain, and mindfulness. In Franklin, Franklin 5th graders hosted a living wax museum. Each student chose a historical or current figure, and they researched about their life and achievements. They dressed up as a person, and when students from younger grades came around to the museum, the 5th graders told the younger students about the person's life. Students and staff were excited to bring the school-wide event back after two years. In Jefferson, a similar project was presented by 3rd grade students. I had the privilege of walking through their Black History Month Museum a few weeks ago. 3rd graders selected a black public figure in history or present day who had contributed to society in a meaningful and positive way through science, art, or civil rights. After weeks of research, students shared their finished projects with 1st graders, who got to learn more about these important figures from fellow students. At Lincoln Hubbard, the Pride Pals, which consists of 5th graders, at Lincoln Hubbard School, celebrated a presentation full of 32 fun, active, and educational activities to celebrate their very own Lincoln Hubbard Olympics. Between subject classes, students would compete on Brain Week to try and go up the rankings, or would extend their reading, writing, or math learning, such as challenging themselves to read an extra five minutes, or push their writing stamina for an additional 10 minutes. Whoever completed the most activities by the end of the March 4th would win either bronze, silver, or gold medals. Moving on to the high school, the Summit High School Performing Arts Department put on a fantastic show earlier this month. I had the pleasure of watching our talented students perform "Footloose" in front of a sold-out crowd. The singing, dancing, and acting were impressive and a joy to witness. I'm excited to see the middle school's production coming up next weekend of Cinderella. That'll be happening on March 18th and 19th. In the world of athletics, we've always had a lot of accolades, and there's none to spare here for our winter athletics this season. The sessions are coming to an end. Our girls' swimming, Group B state champions, North Two Sectional Champions. Freshman Sydney Arcella finished 1st and 3rd in New Jersey 100-meter freestyle and 50-meter freestyle respectively at the Meet of Champions. The 200-meter freestyle relay team of Dagney Donaldson, Caitlin Fagan, Cece Webb, and Sydney Arcella finished 6th in the New Jersey Meet of Champions. And this season, the girls' swim team broke school records in seven of the 11 total swimming events. Very impressive. Track and field results from the Meet of Champions, boys 4x800, 2nd overall, Ryan Sula, Sam Ard, Merrick Muzika, and Teddy Robertson. The girls' 4x800 meter, 11th overall, Maddie Chen, Virginia Lustenberger, Shannon Palfrayman, and Cayman Valdez. And the boys' 4x400, 26 overall, Thomas Cahot, Lucas Cahot, Xavier Morrissey, and Jackson Levine. Senior Lara Coda placed 23rd overall. This followed a 4th place finish at Group 3, turning in the 2nd fastest time in Summit High School history. Congratulations. Our girls' ice hockey team, senior Taylor Cornell scored her 100th career point. Taylor is only the 3rd girl in hockey player to reach this milestone. Junior goaltender Lily Spinner had a career year. She broke her own record for most shutouts in the season, which is eight. Lost her 10th career shutout and extended her record for most career shutouts currently at 13. And Matt Sandbro, head coach, reached his milestone of 100 career wins. So congratulations to all. It's great to report so many positive things happening in the district, from athletics to the arts to the academics, and congratulations to all. That's my report.
Okay, always a lot of great stuff going on in the district. It is time for us as a board to approve the superintendent's report, which is Item 6A and B. Can I get a motion? Moved.
Second.
Ms. Primack?
Yes.
Ms. Miller?
Yes.
Ms. Justice?
Yeah.
Ms. Cohen?
Yes.
Mr. Cho?
Yeah.
Vice President Cologne?
Yes.
President Bonner? Yes. Motion passes. All righty, committee reports, going right to Ed Committee.
I'm ready for you. Hello, everybody. It's so nice to see everyone's faces, all of the faces. The Ed Committee met on March 3rd for an hour with me and Superintendent Huff, for Crystal Mar, the Director of Student Personnel Services, and committee members Yan Cho and Wilita Justice. The first thing that we did at the committee's request was hear from Superintendent Huff, who gave us an overview of what a typical day might look like post-March 7 relaxation or cessation of state mandates. And we thank the superintendent and administrators for talking with one another about really what this means and what was going on, because I wanted to ensure that we as a board understood what it really means and what it looks like. I'm happy to report that the high school and the middle school are very close to normal. This includes everything from going on field trips again, those types of activities, and planning for year-end activities that at this point don't really show many material changes or modifications. So that's very positive. At the elementary school level, the superintendent did hear some varied approaches, and the message was pretty clear that we want to be as back to normal as possible, and consistency is very encouraged where inconsistency is of no consequence. And the committee was very happy to hear that. And in general, daily instruction is back to, you know, pretty normal in all of the schools. You've got all your kidney tables out, kids are, you know, doing group work, best practices are being used, workshop formats are being used. It's all back to pretty normal. And the only place where there is less than normalcy is the place that quite frankly, our parents have a tendency to focus on a lot, and that is lunch and recess. Those two areas are less normal, not so much because of any mandate or COVID reason, but because of the scheduling that was required to ensure that safety could be met when the mandates were in place. And it's just simply going to be too disruptive at this point to students and to staff to reorganize how those timeframes are being used. But, you know, the kids are running around, the kids are having lunch without a mask, the kids are fine. So we appreciate that day in-a-life update, and we, as an oversight function, are pretty satisfied as an Ed Committee that things are becoming more and more consistently normal. We moved on to state testing, speaking of things getting back to normal. The NJGPA, that's the New Jersey Grade 11 Proficiency Assessment, is back, and it will be taking place at the Summit High School for Grade 11, March 15th and 16th. And I'm pretty sure that about two or three weeks ago, impacted students' families were given notification of that. The NJSLA will also take place at the elementary level the weeks of March, I'm sorry, May 9th and May 16th. That's at the elementary level. Different days will be utilized at other levels, and the high school and the middle school will send out information on those specifics. We moved on to the SEL Student Survey. I know members of the board had asked when we did our goal update about student survey information, and the committee was given an overview, and we were happy with the overview. So first, what was the survey and when was it? In December, students grades 4 through 12 were invited to participate in an anonymous 13-question survey. And the questions were based on a number of things, including the CASL, that's C-A-S-L, the CASL Organization Standards. And those are kind of goal standards for what it means to live a good cognitively and socially, emotionally happy life. Our results back in December show that the students across the grade span are doing well. There were no red flags, nothing trend-wise that was alarming, and that was, as you would imagine, a huge exhale. Of course, that doesn't mean that there aren't places that the district would like to focus, and those places include ensuring that all students feel heard, that they all feel recognized, and they all have a trusted adult that they feel they can speak to. And so just to take that last one as an example, until as far as, you know, the board is concerned, all 3,900 and such-and-such students say that they have a trusted adult, then we still have work to do. So that's the area, that's the type of like good-to-great that we would like to go to here. The district will use a whole-child approach, which supports and nurtures all areas of children's development and learning, from the social-emotional to the cognitive skills, and we of course approve of that approach. Finally, we got an update about where we are with our equity audit, and Crystal Mar talked to us about the Hanover Research Group and how they went about choosing that research group as a third party to conduct our audit. Neighboring districts have used Hanover. It is a highly qualified group that does this type of research, and again, neighboring districts have used it with great success. As part of Hanover's evidence-based assessment, or beginning assessment, of how we are doing in our equity, they will conduct a series of community focus groups. Those groups will be conducted over two days at some point in April and May, and more information about the focus groups, the audit itself, and the process by which we will, Hanover will conduct those focus groups, will be forthcoming. Finally, and I know Mr. Getz and Daner is here, so I want to make sure he hears this, Hanover Research will be funded through a grant. It will not be coming out of our operating budget. And for that, we are also very, 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 very happy that we could, you know, use monies not within our operating budget to get this type of good work done. And I know you like that, Mr. Daner. The only thing that we have today, you will see school boards in our agenda, school boards opt, so that's numeral, that's 12C, you will approve Hanover Research being hired and utilized by us. Committee members, did I miss anything? All right, questions?
Is the scope of the Hanover work, this may be Crystal, but I'll throw it to you. Is it as broad as what we've discussed with respect to this audit in incorporating programming and curriculum, as well as hiring and HR practices and cutting across all dimensions of the district, or is there a more narrow focus for what Hanover's looking at?
That's a crystal.
Sure. So it's more narrow. So they are going to be working with our community perception to do the focus groups, and then working to analyze student achievement data when it becomes available. And so based on those two, and they will also have access to the pragmatic and structural that we've done internally, and so based on those four phases that we've gone through, they will help us to work on a strategic plan for the future.
Gotcha. So your work is, you're still working on things that are outside the scope of what Hanover's focused on?
And thank you to Crystal, and she's done, again, a great job doing, you know, what it is that we've asked her to focus on, and we appreciate all that work. Thank you.
Does their work include the teacher audit?
No.
No, okay. Thank you.
Anything else? Good. Thank you. We meet again, by the way, March 31st. It's an odd month. We got a two-for here. So we meet soon for next month.
Excellent. Thank you, madam. Operations?
Yes. So the operations committee met March 2nd for two hours. It did slip past 6:00 PM, which was a little bit disappointing, just because it delayed us in getting to Footloose, Superintendent Huff and I. And I'd just like to reiterate the superintendent's point about the excellence of that show, and so congratulations to Ann Pointer for, again, doing a phenomenal job, and the student performers, it was spectacular, so that was wonderful. So we, and we did get there, so that was good. But we met for the two hours on March 2nd. In attendance, Derek Jess, Emilio Torres, Superintendent Huff, and on the board, myself, Yan Cho, and Melanie Cohen. We discussed the 2223 budget as the first order of business. The meeting to present the proposed budget to the board, as well as to the city council, was moved from March 3rd to March 14th. The reason for that is the state aid from Trenton was not yet provided to our district, and that was a statewide issue, so that was not a summit issue. And so that meeting will occur on Monday evening, next Monday. We reviewed the master work file, so without having final numbers on the budget, we reviewed the work file that Derek and his office utilize to derive the budget for next year, and I can confirm, and our committee can confirm based on the review of this file, that the work that's being undertaken to minimize the impact of inflationary costs and drive the year-over-year increase as low as possible, that that work is substantive and it is thorough. The reason for that is the state aid from Trenton was not yet provided to our district and that was a statewide issue, so that was not a summit issue. And so that meeting will occur on Monday evening, next Monday. We reviewed the, the master work file. So without having final numbers on the budget, we reviewed the work file that Derek and his, his office utilize to derive the budget for next year. And I can confirm, and our committee can confirm based on the review of this, this file, that the work that's being undertaken to, to minimize the impact of inflationary costs and, and drive the year-over-year increase as low as possible, that, that work is substantive and it is thorough. And, and I'd like to thank Derek and his team for, for doing everything within their power to, to tighten the budget as best as they can. And so TBD on those final numbers for next week. Related to, to managing expenses and the work that's being done, several bids have been received in response to the RFP for Insurance Brokerage Services, which was noted in a previous, previous Ops minutes. The bids have been, most have been received, and I suppose by now Derek, all have been received. And without confirming who the broker will be selected or which broker will be selected, the savings, there will be savings in this process in the range of $30,000 to $30,000 to $50,000 a year. And so the cost for our insurance broker will be going down. The, the range is based on whom ultimately is selected on a going-forward basis. And so that's a good outcome. Secondly, we met with our current insurance broker, Brown &amp; Brown, to discuss health benefits options for the district. And so numerous options were reviewed and we discussed how best to procure quality benefits, quality health benefits for the staff of the district in the most cost-efficient manner possible. So that was the, the crux of the conversation. Final decision regarding the health benefits program selected for the district will be made in the coming, maybe at our next meeting, maybe the next two meetings, but sometime in the spring, there will be a, a formal presentation to the committee and to the board with respect to the benefits program for the employees of the district. So again, stay tuned there. Facilities update. We, the business office is completing a comprehensive planning exercise to identify projects that will enhance, meaningfully enhance, the educational programs, experience, and opportunities for our students. And so this is somewhat different from an exercise to identify the maintenance requirements of the facilities of the district. So this is looking at enhancements to, to the facilities and our buildings to, to improve education. And so that process is near completion and the results of that will also be presented in the coming months to, to the Ops Committee and presented here through the minutes. Food services. We reviewed the food service program. Again, that is running positive in net income. That remains the case through January, so the, the positive P and L for food services is just under $95,000 year-to-date. And we also were updated on a Healthy School Lunch Challenge that Pomtonian is sponsoring in, in the buildings for this month. So that's a, a good, a good program, obviously. We touched upon a, a unique item on the agenda, property naming rights. So at the request of the Summit Educational Foundation, we reviewed two policies, Policy 7250 and Policy 7600, which relate to the naming of buildings and programs and the gift levels and guidelines for the naming of buildings and programs for the district. So the review was, was initiated by a substantial grant proposal, pending proposal, from the SEF for educational resources and the build-out of STEAM labs in our elementary schools. For this funding, the committee determined that including SEF in the naming of the labs, such as SEF Innovation Labs, that's, has not been finally determined, I don't believe, but as an example of a name, we determined that, that such naming is compliant with our policies. And as such, we support the use of the SEF name for the labs, with the lab names remaining subject to both policies on a going-forward basis. And a formal proposal for the lab name and the final funding amount will be presented to the Board of Ed in, I believe, our next meeting, because my understanding is that the SEF is approving the amount in their meeting next week. So we should have something here for next month. And just last note on that, our committee, and I believe on behalf of the full board, wants to express our gratitude to the SEF for its leadership and their continued partnership with the administration in providing valuable resources, tools, and facilities to our educators and students. This is a, this is a great initiative, the labs that are, that are on the docket here. So thank you again to the SEF and their leadership team. And the donors, useful to thank donors as well. The 2021 audit report was handed out to us and I've, I've reported out on, on that audit report in the past. And so the final report was presented to us. As you may recall, unqualified opinion, no material findings. And so as part of our committee recommendations, we're recommending acceptance of that final audit report, as well as an, an item from a previous Ops meeting, an approval to make non-salary reduction contributions to 403B plans. I need to read this word for word. For certain employees terminated on or after January 1st, 2022. With such contributions to be made in compliance with all applicable federal and state regs and tax laws. And, and again, this was something that was noted in a previous Ops meeting and, and discussed in a previous Ops meeting. And along with those recommendations, approval of, of all the standard operating and financial items within our agenda. And that is, that is it. Our next meeting, as Donna noted, also in March, March 30th at 4:30 PM. And that was a mouthful. Committee members, any, anything I missed? Hopefully not. Okay.
I have a clarification. Oh, sorry. You said something regarding the naming. I don't recall what it was. It had something to do with, the policy will, will move forward with, with, I didn't understand what it meant.
Yeah, there are, there are requirements for a name to be retained.
Okay.
Right? So an entity can't, you know, for example, if the...
Can't dump and run?
Yeah, so well, if there was an instance of corruption, I'm not speaking about the SEF now, but just as an example. If we had a name on a classroom or a building, et cetera, and then that entity where the name is on it had a problem.
Okay.
Right? The, the, the district retains the right, per the policy, to amend.
Okay.
The naming of, of a building or a room, et cetera, et cetera. And so the naming just has to remain subject to the policies. That's, that's the point.
Thank you.
Yeah. And Derek, did I miss anything with that? I mean, that's just...
I was gonna say similar to Enron. If everybody remembers Enron, when they were at the Houston Astros naming and then they had that big blow up and the name came down. So similar to that.
Not that there's any anticipation of it happening.
Not whatsoever.
Here, we're at it all. We just need to stay, stay in the garden guidelines, right? So.
Quick question. Last time you had mentioned, not actually about what was in your mention, you had mentioned, we had mentioned the, at Brayton, working with insurance for, there was a discussion about some adjustment. I just didn't know if there was perhaps an update on that.
It did not come up in our meeting, so Derek, I don't know if you have anything.
No. So prior to this meeting, we had, and I think it was discussed at the last, at the February meeting, where we did receive partial payment from the insurance company.
Right.
For the flooding that occurred at Brayton. And we also received the money from the SDA for the mold issue that happened at the high, at the middle school. We are still waiting for the balance of the funding from the insurance company for the Brayton flood. And we have been meeting, Emilio and myself have been meeting with FEMA to see about getting funds for remediation of Brayton as well, so it doesn't happen again.
Thank you.
Okay, anything else? All right, President, back to you.
Excellent policy, Mr. Cho.
All, so the all committee met Wednesday, March 2nd at 3:30 for 30 minutes. Committee members in attendance were Superintendent Scott Huff, Rob Cordella, Kathy Murphy, district staff, and then board members, Michael Cologne, Melanie Kohn, and myself. We had several policies and regulations that were both updated and new policies. The first is the policy and regulation 2431.4, Prevention and Treatment of Sports-Related Concussions and Head Injuries. The revised policy. Existing policy modified and updated to expand the definition of athletic competition to include intramural sports. And also the implication of a graduated six-step return to competition policy process developed by the Centers for Disease Control Return to Play Progression Recommendation. And then this policy applies to all the athletic type of activities in the district from kindergarten through fourth grade. The regulation, new regulation, 2460.3, Additional Compulsory Special Education and Related Services. This is the new regulation. This regulation is required because of the New Jersey law related to COVID for schools provides for an additional year of services to students with disabilities to exceed or will exceed the current age of eligibility for special education and related services, which is 21 years of age, in the 2021 through 22, 23 school years. The statute requires boards of education to offer up to one year of additional or compulsory special education and related services for students with disabilities if a determination is made by the students' individualized education program, IEP, and the student's parent, that the student requires the additional special services. And then a policy and regulation 2622, Student Assessments, which is a revision. The existing policy has been updated to include a new approved English Language Proficiency Assessment for English Language Learners with an individualized education program to measure students' progress in English Language Proficiency. And the policy also kind of updates the state requirements for student assessments and reporting results to the Commissioner of Education and District. So for board recommendations, committee recommendations for board action, the first reading of the policies, 2431.4 and 2622, and regulations, 2431.1 and 2460.3 and 2622, along with the second reading of the policy for the prior month. And our next meeting will be also on Wednesday, March 30th at 3:30 PM. Michael, Melanie, anything I missed?
Close it? Okay, thank you, sir. Communications, Ms. Primack.
Thank you. I'll have you know decorating those potatoes is a very serious business. My dining table was unavailable for many days.
Sorry about that.
Yes. Serious business. So we met on February 24th in attendance with myself, Chris Bonner, Leeta Justice, Lauren Calendar, and Doug Orr. And I believe Superintendent Huff was, was actually at a meeting about changes and updating to the world of COVID mandates and not mandates, so he got a pass. We quickly did a review of some of the past projects, featuring the February newsletter, all the wonderful highlights around Black History Month, education and awareness about Black culture, the innumerable contributions of Black Americans. There was a, we had heard, there were plans in the works for a page on the website dedicated to the Librarians Media Specialist that has been completed. Lots of wonderful information about the Librarians Media Specialist, but also the curriculum, the programs, the offerings, and what they do. So I do hope everyone will take a look. And so as a committee, we just continue, we're very pleased the communications really and the work being done, it continues to be connected to the mission, the goals of the district, and it's being shared really nicely with the community. We spent the bulk of our time talking about the upcoming communications survey. A survey went out last spring around spring break and the feedback was extremely helpful and led to many significant changes, both in the nature of communications, the website, and, and it was really impactful. So we really, we looked at the questions from last year, we looked at the proposed questions, there was some very thoughtful, engaged discussion on how to really try and get the best, most helpful results possible. The survey is going to really be a mix of some questions that you will see are similar to last year and over time will, will elicit and show trends. And then there are other questions that are a bit more sort of contemporaneous to see what kind of good changes could be offered and made now and where people are, how people are using the communications. So that was, that was the bulk of our time and it was a really great discussion. And so the survey will be coming out around spring break and we do hope that many people will take the time to answer the questions, give some feedback. It really, it is looked at, it is used, and it, you know, leads to good changes. We did touch briefly on COVID protocols, knowing that updates were coming. The DOH guidance at the time of our meeting had been received. There were roundtable discussions that were still going on and, and other dialogues happening. We just were, you know, as a committee, we, we were confident that as with other communications, that they would be clear, transparent, and timely to the community. And so we awaited that and indeed they were. As far as a little community buzz, really, again, just sort of feedback was that most people really are in a wait-and-see, at the time of February 24th, in a wait-and-see mode, which obviously has ended, but that people were sort of open to, you know, what was going to be coming out and, and waiting to hear from the superintendent. Non-agenda item, we took a quick little detour about internal staff communications. There is a staff newsletter sharing some highlights about things that are going on and accomplishments and whatnot, so that's wonderful. And we discussed maybe at, you know, if there's a downtime in the cycle, maybe taking a look at the value of the newsletter also as a place for staff to just share different resources and, and, you know, information and generally foster engagement, perhaps across the buildings a bit. So that was a nice, short, but I thought good addition to our meeting. We don't have any recommendations. Our next meeting is March 24th at 8:45 AM. To my fellow committee members, anything to add? Something I missed?
All good.
Any questions? Okay.
Excellent. Thank you, Ms. Primack. Negotiations, I just put my signature on the memorandum of agreement for our supervisors, which was an adjustment based on our negotiations with our principals. So that's done for, on our end. And so that's negotiations. Any liaising in the last month?
I, I did liaise with SEF, but you have heard this, you know, what they were discussing and so, but it was, again, very just gratifying and wonderful, you know, exciting projects and their support is incredible and invaluable.
Any other liaising? Not a word? I like it.
I love that.
Is it a verb? Can it be a verb? Liaising? All right. Somebody check me on that. Okay, excellent. Committee reports are over. Let's go to public comment. Mr. Jess, ground rules, please.
Thank you, President Bonner. At this time, the public is welcome to come speak on both agenda and non-agenda items. Anyone wishing to speak shall first seek recognition by the presiding officer. We'd ask that you please come to the microphone and state your name and address in a clear audible tone for the record. All comments should be directed to the board president, not an individual member of the board. Unless additional time is granted by the board president and our little friendly clock here, please keep your comments to three minutes or less. In addition, please note that this portion of the meeting is for public comment and not meant to be a back and forth. Board members and administration will not respond to comments or questions at this time, but will provide you with information as soon as possible.
Okay, thank you, sir. Any public comment for items on the agenda? Seeing none? Any public comment for items not on the agenda? Fantastic. Fastest public comment in recent memory. Moving on to the remainder of the meeting, we need to approve the...
Excuse me, before you do that, you need to just close that.
Oh, sorry.
No worries.
Jess, he's a stickler.
May I have a motion to close, please?
Motion.
Thank you. May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? So moved. Thank you, Mr. President.
Her future references says right here to close following discussion. So when you're here, you'll know exactly what to do. Yep, it's just right there.
We can make the font big.
Yeah, I think it'll be yellow.
Highlight it in yellow, make it bigger.
All right. Now, remainder of the meeting. We need to approve some board minutes. Approval of the minutes for the February 10th regular and executive session, can I get a motion, please?
Move.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Item passes.
Excellent. Curriculum instruction and program, items A and B, can I get a motion?
Move.
Second.
Ms. Primack.
Yeah.
Second.
Ms. Primack.
Yeah.
Ms. Miller.
Yes.
Ms. Justice.
Yes.
Ms. Cohen.
Yes.
Mr. Cho.
Yes.
Vice President Cologne.
Yes.
President Bonner.
Yes.
Motion carries.
School board operations, small section tonight, A through C, can I get a motion?
Move.
Second.
Ms. Primack.
Yes.
Ms. Miller.
Yes.
Ms. Justice.
Yes.
Ms. Cohen.
Yes.
Mr. Cho.
Yes.
Vice President Cologne.
Yes.
President Bonner.
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right. Personnel, we're gonna take a slight pause here because we have a, a person of interest on the list that Superintendent Huff wants to talk about.
Thank you, President Bonner. I'd like to just take a moment and recognize a very important resignation on the agenda tonight, and that is the resignation of our very own Principal, Ms. Janice Tierney, Principal of Franklin Elementary School. Janice Tierney has had an amazing and successful 23-year career in education, with her last eight years here in Summit Public Schools as an educational leader. She entered our district as principal of the primary centers, and she spent the last four years as Principal of Franklin Elementary. Janice is a highly respected and accomplished leader, and we thank her for all her contributions to the families and her colleagues in the school community. Janice, you will be missed. We wish you health and happiness in your retirement. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. So items A through Q, which does indeed include the request for retirement for Principal Tierney. A through Q, can I get a motion?
Move.
Second.
Ms. Primack.
Yes.
Ms. Miller.
Yes.
Ms. Justice.
Yes.
Ms. Cohen.
Yes.
Mr. Cho.
Yes.
Vice President Cologne.
Yes.
President Bonner.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Excellent. Pause and regulation, one, two, three, four, first readings, one second reading, can I get a motion?
So moved.
Second. Ms. Primack.
Yes.
Ms. Miller.
Yes.
Ms. Justice.
Yes.
Ms. Cohen.
Yes.
Mr. Cho.
Yes.
Vice President Cologne.
Yes.
President Bonner.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Also excellent. Now, we do have a need for a closed session, I understand?
Yes, we do.
Okay, need a motion to-
Well, hold on. Wait. Hold, hold.
He's got it under control.
We're as pursuant to NJSA 10:4-12B, the Board of Education may exclude the public from that portion of a public meeting wherein the Board discusses any of the matters set forth at NJSA 12:4-12B 1 through 9. Now therefore be resolved in accordance with the provisions of the Open Public Meetings Act, the Board of Education shall conduct a closed public session pursuant to provisions of NJSA 12:4-12B for the purpose of discussing the following matter, litigation. There may or may not be action taken as a result of this session.
So yeah, that wasn't written here.
I know it's not.
Too long.
Listen.
Just want that on the record.
Now, listen, I don't, I don't want to take an 11-page agenda and turn it into like 13 pages. I'm trying to save, you know, 40 cents on the paper here.
Fair enough. Can I get a, can I get a motion to go to closed session?
Move.
Second.
Ms. Primack.
Yes.
Ms. Miller.
Yes.
Ms. Justice.
Yes.
Ms. Cohen.
Yes.
Mr. Cho.
Yes.
Vice President Cologne.
Yes.
President Bonner.
Yes.
Motion carries. We are in recess at 7:55.
What am I doing?
You're motioning to come back into public session.
I'm so confused, I'm so, I'm tired and confused. All right, can I get a motion to come back into open session, please?
So.
Second.
Ms. Primack.
Yes.
Ms. Miller.
Yes.
Ms. Justice.
Yes.
Ms. Cohen.
Yes.
Mr. Cho.
Yes.
Vice President Cologne.
Yes.
President Bonner.
Yes.
Motion passes. We're back in at 8:30.